Recall the meeting to order. Is there a motion to accept the, let's see, to re-convene as a council and not, well, that's it, just re-convene as a council?
[inaudible]
Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we will call to order the meeting of September 7th, 2012, with a moment of silent meditation and a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there a motion to sit as a licensing board?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First item up is Class F liquor license for our, I like to call it the annual Langworthy Public Library fundraiser, and it is for the event on October 13th, 2012. And who's here tonight, anybody? There you go, hi. And is there any questions from the council?
How much is it? Where is it? When is it?
And do I get a ticket?
Come on up to the microphone, please. Come up to the microphone and just state your name for the record. It's good advertising, you have to tell us all about it.
Well, it's October 13th, which is on a Saturday. It's a beer tasting this year. It is not a wine tasting, no.
No.
And we're having local brewers also, who will be bringing their wares. So, it is $20, and we will have it at the Langworthy Library, right on Spring Street.
Seven o'clock, nine?
Seven to nine approximately.
Seven o'clock at the library?
At the library.
How are you selling the tickets? How are you getting the word out?
Planning Board gets them. I buy them.
Yep, we can, you can buy them at the library.
Okay.
Yep.
And Howard always has them for sale at the planning board?
Yes, yes, Howard Walker will have them at the planning board.
It's nice to switch over to beer.
Yeah, it should be fun.
But that sounds marvelous, and you're going to have that nice, all the different things to eat as well?
Yes, plenty of food.
And a wonderful little spread.
Plenty of food.
Yes, you do. Thank you, we're looking forward to it. Any other questions?
No, but I want to say, October 13th, 14th is also going to be the Hop Arts Tour throughout Hopkinton and Richmond and that area. We also have the Harvest Festival at Crandall Field on the same time. That's going to be one busy weekend. That's a great way to tie everything together. Motion to approve an application for a Class F liquor license for Langworthy Public Library for their program scheduled October 13th, 2012, at the library.
Second.
Is there anyone from the public that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay. What is the fee?
I believe it's $15.
Okay.
Waiving of the fee.
Why don't you just amend the motion? Is there anyone wishing to amend it, to add and include the waiver of the fees?
Yeah, I'll amend the motion to waive the $15 licensing fee.
Second.
Okay, so we'll vote on the amendment first. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we'll vote on the main motion, which includes the waiver. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that was easy. Good luck. Next up, ordinance amendment, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, good idea. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next up, Board of Finance. You had your hearing at the last council meeting. Is there any other comment from the council?
Yes.
Scott, go ahead.
Why didn't you make a motion first? Why didn't you make a motion? I'd make a motion to, what do we do?
Just a motion to repeal.
A motion to repeal the ordinance amendment to Chapter 2 Administration, Article 2 Boards, Committees, Commissions, Division 2 Board of Finance, and the proposed amendment would appeal in their entirety, sections 2 through 41 through 2 through 47, under Chapter 2 Administration, Article 2 Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Second.
Okay, discussion, Scott?
Yes, I'm going to be the odd man out, and I assume this should be a four to one vote. I believe that we should try to put new life into the finance board. The way I see the scenario in the town of Hopkinton is that finances is a great concern of our town, and I think it would be important to have a public input from a finance board. Our two sister Charroh towns do have active finance boards of budgets, commissions. I realize most of the towns on Rhode Island do not, but I find it interesting, in the town of Hopkinton, we have a police commission, and not every city and town on Rhode Island has a police commission, and I'm not, I'm just noting that as, you know, looking at boards that other communities have. And I have no problems with a police commission, I'm just making that as an observation. I think that, right now, I mean, a lot of people talk about economic development, but I don't see that as really a big solution. The present council and the present budget, we held the line on the town aspect of it, but the Charroh budget increased, and I think, and I would feel more comfortable if we could get more rise. I think if the budget's repealed, I mean, the finance board is repealed, it probably won't have any immediate impact, because the board has been active, but I think that we should at least give it another try. And so, I support at least giving it another try. Do you also, I think we should look at all boards and commissions collectively and see which ones are required by law, like the Board of Canvases, and ones which are basically advisory. So, I'm going to be voting against this. Thank you.
Tom?
Scott, just for your information, I've sat on this council for, this is my finishing after my 60 year. That board's been inactive for eight years. We have done our due diligence to get people to come to our budget hearings. The only time that people ever show up at our budget hearings is one I remember when we were going to cut the library funding. We had a lot of people show up then, and then we were going to cut the ambulance. Other than that, we never get anybody at our budget hearings. This council has, well, this and the last two councils have cut our budget immensely, from where it used to be years ago. The charter states that the town manager is to make their budget and present it to the council. We've been through a couple of town managers in that interim that I've been here, and I don't see any real use of the commission. That's it.
Thank you. Barbara?
I have nothing more to say.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with Tom. You know, the finance commission I don't think is really needed. We have a town manager, town finance director, plenty of budget hearings. The part of the budget that we really control is $6 million, and we do a really great job at it, so I don't think it's needed anymore, so I support repeal.
Can I respond?
Just for the record, I want to note that, a couple of things. As far as the boards and commissions are concerned, and what is needed or needs to be changed, we've been doing that all summer long with our boards and commissions. One of the last ones left to make a decision on is the finance board. I think everybody's covered everything, except I have to say that the finance board in the 80s and the 90s, when it was up and functioning, it was, it was doing so because it was vitally needed. I mean, if we didn't have them, it would have been a real problem. We didn't have a town manager, the council ran the town, and threw, and then had to deal with all the department heads, et cetera, and that was fine. That's the way it was, and it worked fine. But the finance board was really important, was listened to, and sometimes they'd make a recommendation, it didn't always go, but most of the times it did, and they did their work. They had to deal with contracts and on and on. So, they are owed a debt of gratitude for, over the years, they did do what they needed to do, what they were required to do, and they fulfilled their responsibilities, and they were listened to. So, I wanted to make sure everybody, that, those are my comments, as far as the previous finance boards. The reason we don't have one now is because nobody's put in for it, because it's changed. The charter has changed, we have a different form of government, and it's as simple as that. Scott, you had something else?
I would just say in closing that Town of Westerly has a finance board, they've had a town manager since, I believe, 1969, when they changed. The Town of Charleston has an administrator, they have a budget board, and there's a finance board in Richmond, and they have a town administrator. I believe that, I think it should be another go, because I think a finance board with representative communities can be an advocate for things in the community. This town council just lost a building proposal by a small amount of votes, a few votes, and I'm not saying they would have had an impact on passage, but if you had an active finance board, it's possible it could be an advocate for certain proposals in town. They might disagree with the council, and they might not be advocates, but I think at the very least, we should, before we eliminate it, give it another go. And I know it would be four to one vote, I can tell, but anyways, it's no hard feelings. Luckily, we all don't take a like. Thank you.
Was there anyone? Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot, we already had our hearing. I missed that. So, I guess we'll take our vote. We're all done? I think we've all had our say? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay, so it's four to one.
You nailed that one. Good. Good hearing.
All right, next up is the consent agenda. Is there anything to remove from the consent agenda before we approve it?
September 4th, if we can pull that.
At the council meeting? Okay. Executive session?
Pull the National Grid Drives and Poll.
Okay, I haven't read the executive.
Do you want to pull in the exec, right, in the executive session?
And how about the, in the regular meeting for September 4th, like in the back of it, on the bottom, it said like in memory of it, it didn't have it?
No, I know.
What are you going to do with it? Okay, wait a minute, we'll get to that in a minute.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the town clerk, approve tax collector refunds and tax assessor abatements and supplements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go down these one by one. Town council meeting minutes of September 4th.
Yeah, so, page six, it wasn't adjourned in memory of anyone, so I wrote just an omission, so. I forget who it was, Scott, do you want me to know?
I don't think we did it.
Oh, okay, so we'll just, probably shouldn't have had that verbiage.
There was one.
Page six?
Yeah.
Yeah, the thing that Barbara said, that only three out of communities of 39 still had them, I think there was more than 30.
What page are you on, Scott?
Five.
On page five.
I think that, maybe she said that, but it was.
Barbara?
I did say that.
Okay, because I think there's more. That list was about one, five, or six, dropped to six. Don't make any difference.
I don't have the, I don't have the list.
Anything else on September 4th council meeting minutes?
Nope.
Okay, next up, executives, oh, okay, we'll forget that. National Grid for the poll.
Yes, there is no report from the DPW, which is, we always get, I sees here. So, there's, there's no report from that. I want to make sure that these polls are going to be off the side of the road further enough, or if that road gets widened, that we don't have any issues. Let's plan ahead for future developments.
So, what we could do is refer this to a manager who will take care of it, and then he'll come back to another council meeting.
And is there any double polls we can tie in with this again?
I don't know, it doesn't seem to be.
Doesn't seem to be.
Okay.
All right.
I was, I just didn't see anything from DPW.
Less Tim knows.
Okay. Well, I don't want to put him on the spot, because you'd need to fill out the form. All right. Okay, so we'll leave, let's see, left to approve is the council meeting minutes of September 4th.
Motion to approve town council meeting minutes of September 4th, 2012.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First public forum, is there anyone who would like to speak at the first public forum? All right, next up is council president's report. This is very simple. Let me pass that out. Lisa, a copy for you and Bill.
I have my.
As a quick summary, I try not to get into any details, but unless you have a specific concern, but the problem is, the, as you know, the Depot Square project went online a couple of years back, and when it went online, or when it was finished, and the ribbon was cut, and it was up and running, the Hope Valley Fire Department had, Hope Valley-Yelman Fire District, had agreed to handle the maintenance for that, and which they have been doing, and as if you drive by and look, it's absolutely pristine, it's just, it's just beautiful. Fountain's running, the grass is green, I mean, it's just, it's very, very nice. Unfortunately, what ended up happening is the, we didn't know, they didn't know, there was a broken pipe underneath. So, when they got their bills for water, they went from an average of maybe $120,000 per gallon for a year for the fire department, and it more than doubled. It went up to, this past year, 308,000 gallons, and they weren't doing anything different because we asked. So, that was, of course, of a concern to the fire department, because the gallons went up, but the bill doubled. So, instead of paying, more than doubled, instead of paying around $500 to $700 for the yearly water, they were given a bill of more than $2,300, for instance, in 2012. So, they had two years, it was 2011 and 2012. Considering that the water went up so much, the first year, there was a lot of construction, a lot of water was used, and perhaps that could have explained why there, there were more gallons, but the second year, it shouldn't have happened. That was when they looked, and they discovered there was, there was a broken pipe. Now, there is a, an agreement, you've seen Chief Stanley's letter that he sent, asking if the town can help and do something any different to help them, so that they don't spend down all the money that's there for the water bills when they come due. What we did was, we looked at their, the last five years before the Home Depot, uh, Home Depot, before the Depot Square, I was going to say that, before the Depot Square, we needed to get a feel for how much they've been using. So, we've estimated that they use about $120,000 on an average year. Now, the reason we had to do that, of course, is because they were getting one bill for two properties now, for the, for the depot project and for the, for the fire department. What they have done is the chief put in a meter, so that when the bills come due, and the meters are read for 2013, they'll know exactly how much the fire department's using, and the fire department can pay all the fees, and they know exactly how much is going to the depot. And that way, if anything ever happens in the future, as far as a leak or anything, they'll know, and they'll also be able to assess whether or not there's something different they need to do to conserve water, if, if it becomes a lot. So, what we did, though, is we wanted to come up with a way to assist them, because their, their budget to maintain that and to, to keep it up is used, is made through the sale of bricks and any donations that come in. What I did was, I looked at the 1991, July 9th, 1991 agreement that we have between Richmond and Hopkinton, where we pay them for the water that comes across the line, and there are a lot of little fees in there, but there's one particular, which everyone pays for, the user, but there's another section, the customer, and the customer's Hopkington, the customer's base allocation shall be based upon the most recent quarterly meter report, and the rate structure for usage over the base allocation shall be .003 cents per gallon. So, what we came up with as a recommendation is that we, finance will actually create two bills. There'll be one user, it will be the fire department, which includes the Depot Square, just the same way it is now, except there'll be a sub bill. We'll know exactly how much went to the depot, we'll know exactly how much goes to the fire department. The fire department will pay according to the fee structure that's been approved by the previous, by our last council. No, it was this council last year. And what I'm proposing is that we use that .003, and we, we only charge on this sub bill, whatever the gallons is, if it's $100,000, they only pay .003, and it will save money to be used for the maintenance, rather than just paying for water, an excessive amount. So, that, that's what we, we came up with, and also, the, we'd like to look at those past two bills, and instead of charging them a couple of thousand dollars in one bill, it was more than $2,300, we figured out how much, and the finance will do it exactly, how much goes to the fire department. In other words, credit their, their past bills. Don't charge them these higher fees. Charge them the .003. And credit the account. So, that was what we came up with. Bill and I met with Chief Stanley and discussed it, and we were in agreement that, that was fair. So, I don't know how you all feel about it. Tom?
First of all, where was the broken pipe?
It was somewhere right near the fountain.
So, that happened during the construction?
I don't know.
Why did the pipe break?
I don't know.
Did they dig it up? Did they find out? I mean, did it freeze? Is it too high to the surface?
I don't know.
I'm not going to give all this abatement without knowing particulars. I don't think that's correct. If it's, if it's, if it was a frozen pipe, and they didn't redig it and put it two feet down like it should have been in the first place, then it's just going to freeze again. We get a good hard frost, and then it's going to break, and then they're going to ask for another abatement. The other question I have, who pays for the fire department's credits? If we credit them, if we credit them for the money, who pays that amount? Someone's going to pay for it. We're getting charged a certain rate.
Okay.
So, who pays for it? All the other users, or is it town?
You want that answer now?
Yes, please.
Okay. The answer to that one is, the .003 is exactly what we pay to Richmond for the water. Exactly what we pay, right out of the contract. But does that mean that the town is now paying for Depot Square? The town, no. The town, no. What it means is, if their bill was, if their bill was originally $2,300, and they paid for the, for all that water according to the user fees.
How much is it now? What is that user fee now?
All the user's fees?
No.
Theirs.
For theirs.
For the whole valley.
For the fire department, yeah. If it's, if we're going down to .003.
Oh, I'll show you.
I'd like to know what.
Seems like it's .0085.
Right, because it's .003 over the base fee, is what you read. So, my concern is.
You read that .003 is over the base fee, so there's a base fee plus this on top.
The base fee is what the, this is what the fire department pays. In January, they get a billing for, and Agnes is here if I make any mistakes, in January, they get a billing for what's called the base allocation. Every user will get 30,000 gallons. Every user. And for that amount, they will pay a base fee. The base fee is based upon the meter size. The fire department has a quarter inch meter. The quarter, so the quarter inch meter charge is.
Oh, I remember that.
Yeah, okay. This is, is, I think, 120? Or 175, I'm right, it went up, okay. So, the, so for the base fee that goes out in January for the first 30,000, they pay $175, okay? And then, after that, they, the meters are read in, I don't know, June, I think, and in, or sometime around then, and a June bill goes out, and that's for everything in excess. If they use, the fire department uses 200,000, let's say, in excess of the 30, they pay a rate that, the more you use, the more you pay. Now, they're, that was incorrect, they don't pay .0085. What they pay is, for the first 30, that was the January bill, for the next 30, 30 to $60,000, they pay $105. For the next 30,000, which is $60,000 to 90, 30,000 gallons, to 60, they pay $105. Because they hit, they're, you're using 200,000, now we go to 60. 60,000 to 90,000 is 165, that's another fee. Now, we go from 90 to 150,000, that's where they'll pay for that, $480, and that all corresponds to a per gallon rate. It starts at .0035, then it goes to .0055, and if you use more than it goes to .0080. If you use more than 150,000 and up, then for the, for, just for those gallons, you pay .0085. So, it's incremental.
And that's the category.
It's a formula, and that's what the fire department will pay. If you change anything tonight, and you decided that the Depot Square is going to pay a different amount, the fire department is still going to pay all those fees, just like they always do, every year. The only difference is, they will not have to pay .0085 for the additional gallons that go to the depot. So, instead of paying .0085, they'd pay, if you approved it, they'd pay .003, okay? And that amount would meet our expenses, it will be, it will not come out of revenue for the water line, the town does not, it won't cost any more. Now, these figures are all more, this extra money goes into revenue, which meets other expenses of the water line. So, that, that's what, does that help?
Yeah, what is, because the fire department gained by just doing this.
Yes, they gained property.
They, they've gained property.
Mm-hmm.
The whole backside of the fire department is now a parking lot, which was part of Western North. So, they gained, and that's why the agreement was met, that they would maintain Depot Square. My question is, what happens if something breaks, if the pipe breaks again?
I guess we'll need to know how.
Who pays for that?
They do. They maintain.
They're still maintaining the entire.
I think Tom is, I would agree with Tom on one section of it, is that we really shouldn't make any arrangements until we find out what happened to the pipe. Was it fixed? Was it not fixed? What happened, so that we know that whatever has occurred will not occur again, because that could be during construction, it could have been a freeze, it could be anything. I think we really need to know what happened to the pipe, what did they determine happened to the pipe, and they have since fixed it. I think it's perfectly valid, I'm not sure about the .003, because my understanding from what you just read is that the first 30,000 gallons is $175. How much does this fountain use? I mean.
We won't know until 2013.
Exactly, but it certainly shouldn't, it should be a recirculating power.
That's what I thought.
So, it seems, well, in that case, it shouldn't, which means that effectively, they don't have to be charged .003, they'd already be charged 175, and it would be for the 30,000 gallons, because that's what is recircling, recycling. So, I don't have a, I don't see why I should make it .003, when they're already following, the Depot Square should follow what is already in the plan. The issue is that they are responsible for the maintenance, which means surely they use their hoses and they have to rinse it off on occasion, but that's part of the fire department water, not part of Depot Square water, because Depot Square doesn't have any water except for the fountain. So, I would like to see what happened to the pipe, so we know it's not going to happen again, which is, I understand that they need some help there, but we also need to see, we should be, they should be able to tell us from the, from the fountain itself.
Or who fixed it.
That, well, they should tell us all the fixing on the pipe, but the fountain itself, someone tells us how much that fountain takes, and it certainly should fit under that 30,000 gallons a year, because if it doesn't, we have a real problem with the fountain. And that's 175, and I think that's perfectly acceptable. I certainly wouldn't want them to pay more than what the fountain uses.
Well, they wouldn't, you need to understand that, not understanding, just, I understand everything you need, and that's fine, but one thing I want to make clear is, they would, the, then, if the home, if the, if the Depot Square used 30,000 gallons, they wouldn't pay 175 for the water, because the fire department's already used about 120,000 as part of their normal routine. The next 30, or the next amount, whatever they use, would bump it up to a higher. Right. Gallons. So, it wouldn't be 175, it would be, it would be in this range. It would be .0080, they would pay for water, if it was in excess of about 120,000. I just want to make sure you understood.
I understood that. But they're going to have two meters. So, the meter for Depot Square.
No, it doesn't work that way.
Well, where?
Well, I just said they put in two meters.
They put, no, they put in, just make it clear, they put in a meter, just so that the fire department would know what. the fire department would know what the depot is using.
That's right.
That's the only reason. There, if you, that will not be counted as another user. That is not allowed in the contract.
So it's coming off of their line?
It's coming off...
For the addition.
Yes.
My question is, where is that located? Where is that meter located? Also, does that fountain run 24/7? And what size is the pump, gallons per hour? Because if I know how many gallons per hour, I can figure out exactly what, how much water that pump's going to use for the months that's, it doesn't run all year, because it freezes.
I do have a question. How many meters are we talking about? I thought there was a meter at the bridge.
There's just one.
There's one meter at the town line.
Okay, so in other words...
And everyone who ties into the water line has their own meter at their home or their business.
So the fountain has an individual meter?
No.
Well, it has an individual meter, only for the purposes of knowing how much water is being used, not for the purpose of being another user.
So, does Fred want to know what the Depot Square's using? That's why the second, the meter was put in?
Yes.
Okay. But he's still willing to pay the rate?
Well, we were hoping that we would reduce the rate, and so then in the future...
Just for that portion?
Just for that portion. That was the hope.
See, I know, but I have an issue. I have a problem that, what happens if one of the residents, their pipe breaks? Are we going to reduce their water?
No. I, see, I don't have a, I understand trying to help them with this loss of water. I don't have a problem there. I don't know why, the idea of two users, the fire department is one, and they use up to 150, 200,000 gallons a year. That's understandable, and they pay their rates, .0085, perfect. The Depot Square, even though it's under the fire department, is a separate user. And if that is specifically the fountain and the pump, and we know that, as Tom has said, we can tell exactly how much water is supposed to be going through this, it would be a second user at $175.
May I explain why it's a second user?
I know, but let me finish. Because it seems to me it saves them the most money this way. I'm trying to help the fire department. The fire department paying for what they use as a fire department at .0085, and the Depot Square using less than 30,000 a year, because we can pretty much guarantee that's the truth, they would only pay 175 additionally for Depot Square. That's a lot cheaper than even doing .003.
All right, there's a reason we can't do that, and it goes back to the 1991 contract with Richmond. Richmond, in part of the contract, there is a, specifically on page one, they allow the only, a limited number of users, which is 67, which includes the Hope Valley School. So they only allow 67 users. If you then made the depot another user, it would be an illegal act, because they're not one of the pre-approved 67 users. That property is part of the fire department. The fire department is one of those 67 approved and legally binding users. There's actually a plat and lot.
Right. But we couldn't ask Richmond then to add user number 68, which is the plat and lot Depot Square.
No.
Well, we can't. I mean, if we can't, we can't. It's just a question.
I mean, that's another way around it.
Well, I mean, it's number 68, because obviously we'll have other users at some point.
I mean, that's another way to get at it, but I, the reason we even thought of this, and not for other customers, is just because it's a public space.
Right.
Like the Crandall Field, it's a public space, and then we didn't, that was why we were thinking of helping them out, right?
So these amounts that they're requesting, how much of an abatement are they asking for?
Yeah, that's a good question.
They're asking for assistance.
How much, I guess?
Well, we agreed that it would, we would charge them point, out of that meeting, we said .003.
Okay.
Which would mean...
But do we know, do we know how much Depot Square, I guess, how much?
We'll know when we read that meter, next June. We'll know exactly what goes to the Depot Square when you read the meter.
He's not asking for an abatement on what was, because of that broken pipe?
He's asking if we can help out with past bills, too.
Okay, how much?
I don't think I could...
How much would it be? On the past bills?
It would be about $1,000 off. We're talking about, the fire department normally paying anywhere between $500 and $700. And for two bills, it went beyond 2,000, as you've read in the last...
No, I don't have any problem with that.
I'm just understanding the frame.
I know, but it's one of those, we need to know what, we need to know about the pipe, and if it's fixed.
I got that. I understand that.
Right.
Which I'm going to ask Tom to investigate.
Find out, that would help us, Sylvia.
Yeah, oh, of course. Sure. So is there anything else we need to look at?
I have one other question. .003 is what part of the water that the department uses? Where do you want to put .003? Because right now, they pay up to .0085.
Right.
Right. So where does the .003 come in?
That would come in...
After the fact?
That would come in, for instance, if it went into effect for this year, if you decided that when they read the bill in June, the fire department will pay for water used by the fire department, which is probably around 120,000. And then any of that other amount that they use, you can read it on the meter, on a separate meter. You go over to the Home Depot, uh, Home Depot. Depot Square, keep calling Home Depot. Go over to the Depot Square, and you read that meter, and you know, let's say it's 100,000 gallons, or whatever the amount is, whatever the depot uses by reading that separate meter, that's what would pay .003. The fire department would still pay for their own water.
Right. .003 is the first level at 30,000?
That's the level that we pay Richmond for water, beyond other fees that we pay to Richmond. We don't just pay Richmond .003.
Right. So they would not be paying just .003, but the base as well as the .003?
The fire department pays the base, as their bill. It's complicated. I mean, there's a formula.
I don't think anyone has a problem with helping them out. I think we need to get more information in order to do so.
Well, I understand that.
I think, obviously, my sentiment is, and I don't know if it's here by the council, but there's a table list to the next meeting, because...
Well, we'll bring it up at a meeting when we're ready, but when we have answers to the questions that are brought up. So have we gotten all the questions?
I want to say one other thing. I would really like them, if they could put the meter on Depot Square, which obviously they can...
They already did.
Right. Then they should be able to, even after a month or two, know, be able to take it out 12 months, if it's only being used for this fountain. So they'll know how much the fountain is going to use in the course of the year. And certainly, we can reduce it down to what that is, as long as we have solved the original problem.
Yeah, I don't know anything about fountains. I don't know how much evaporates.
Unless there's a leak, it shouldn't use any more water.
Exactly. I don't know. Right.
I hope it recycles it.
Unless there's a leak.
Yeah, if it doesn't recycle it, then they have another problem. That's another whole...
Well, yeah, see, there's a whole nother thing that they would have to look at if they can't solve this problem. All right, so we'll put it off to another meeting. All right, next up, town manager's report. Bill?
On September 6th, DPW Director Tim Tef and I interviewed four candidates for the then vacant position of custodian in the Department of Public Works. After the interviews, we selected Tammy Lampfair of North Road, Hoppington, for the full-time position. She was currently serving as a part-time custodian, and seemed to be the best fit for the position. She began work today, and she replaces a former custodian who left unemployment earlier in the year. So that's not an additional position, that's a replacement for a vacant existing position. Secondly, the town's negotiating team continued collective bargaining negotiations with the clerical, professional, technical, and police unions during the first two weeks of September. And I'm happy to announce that it looks like there's been an agreement with the clerical and professional technical unions. And we're just working out the contract language now, subject to formal ratification by the union, and we anticipate presenting it to the town council in executive session at their next meeting. So that worked out very well. And I would just like to personally thank Vice President Tom Buck, who kind of spearheaded that effort on the town's negotiating team, along with Finance Director Laura Kenyon, and our esteemed Town Solicitor Patricia Buckley. So it was a job well done. September 11th, Planner Jim Lampfair and I met with Bob Carr, the developer of Conacha Woods, and Dennis Dupree, his engineer, regarding the remaining road and off-road issues in the Conacha Woods subdivision. They requested the meeting in order to discuss onsite inspections by an on-call engineer to determine exactly whether the work they've done is acceptable to the town, and the scope of the work remaining to be completed. This is an ongoing project from several years. We address it almost on a daily basis, on a weekly basis, and we've been working for the last month or so, hand in hand, with Assistant Town Solicitor Scott Levek, to try to resolve this matter in a timely fashion. And lastly, September 13th, we conducted a bimonthly departmented staff meeting for all department heads at the Police Department Conference Room. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the manager? Barbara?
Yeah, the Conacha Woods subdivision, is this Hoppington Hill Road?
Yes.
Right? And when is the meeting with Fussin O'Neil?
The meeting that we had did not include them, but there's going to be a future onsite inspection with an engineer, but it may not necessarily be Fussin O'Neil. It may be another engineering outfit, the cost of which will be borne by, not the town, a private party.
Be borne by a private party, not the town?
That's correct.
Okay, so why would we do that?
We would do that because Fussin O'Neil doesn't have the survey capabilities, they're in engineering outfit, and they would just found that out to somebody else. So we're going to contract with another engineering firm that specializes in survey work, the cost of which will not be borne by the town.
Right, but we'll choose that engineer. We choose the engineer, and then they pay for the engineer.
That's correct.
So that we know that it's our information we're getting up.
We choose the engineer, they pay for it.
All right. Because I have to say, this is certainly not a timely work, this has not been timely in the least.
You think?
Yeah. Really a problem. And it's really very unfortunate. And I know you're doing the best you can. I'm not saying anything against what you're doing, Bill.
We know.
But it's very frustrating.
Yeah.
Thank you.
On any number of levels.
Any other questions?
No.
Bill, during the negotiations, you forgot to mention your esteemed self, who has a great deal of influence on doing these contracts also. Very impressed.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, old business. Another job by the manager. That must have been fun.
More stuff.
Putting that all together. The hazardous mitigation plan.
This is another ongoing saga. The town's hazardous mitigation plan, it goes back a couple of years. And to make a long story short, the council actually approved a former version of this plan back on April 4th of last year. And once we completed that plan, we sent it up to Rhode Island EMA, who approved it, and then we sent it up to FEMA. And they had it for several months, and they had approximately half a dozen revisions that they wanted to the plan. So they sent the plan back to us. And it was a little difficult getting some answers as to what exactly needed to be changed, and how it needed to be changed. So what we did is, we contacted REMA, and we requested them and FEMA to come down for a meeting at the town hall and the council chambers. And we brought in all our applicable department heads, and we sat down and hammered it out exactly as to what revisions they required, and how they wanted them written up. And they were very good. And we farmed out to each committee member the exact revisions that were needed, according to the expertise on the committee. They came back to my office, we made the revisions, sent them up to REMA, they approved them, and recommended that the plan be approved. We sent it back up to FEMA. It took another approximately six months, and then last week, we finally got the green light, that they sent us a tentative approval. Now, based on that tentative approval, it's got to go back before the town council for adoption, final adoption by the council, at which time, we send the whole package back to FEMA for their final approval. And once they give us that, which should be in a matter of a couple of weeks, we're able to access those funds on the $100,000 grant for that South Drive drainage project. So that will allow us to move forward. And in the meantime, in the last couple of weeks, I've been in contact with Sean Martin, who's the resident engineer for Fussin O'Neil. And there are some significant steps that we have to take. We have to get DEM approval, and several other steps that he listed in an email to me. So it looks like, if everything happened in the town's favor, and very quickly, that we wouldn't be able to get the project started till mid-December. So it looks like, by the time we get DEM approval, it looks like the project will be completed sometime during the spring. But you can rest assured, it will be tops on the list. That's where that stands now. So we would just request the council's formal adoption of the plan as it is, to send it back to FEMA for their adoption.
Sylvia, is that happening tonight?
I hope so.
Bill, I just have one quick question. On the South Drive project, how much is that, is that 100% reimbursed, or just 75%?
I believe it was 25%. Yeah, it was a 75-25 split, but our...
Soft costs were in that?
Yes, it's a soft match. And we plan to use DPW for at least 25% of that project, so that the town won't have to pay any money. They can submit those costs as reimbursement towards a grant. Okay.
I think we should correct on page 14, since the tense position was eliminated, we now have a cap, and I know it's a, in the second full paragraph, we should change to a tentative cap, and it's a small point.
If we do that, I think we're...
That's fine.
We can do that.
Since for all recreation, for all ages, you'd be able to record for all ages for that small point, but since the captain is now in chief of the top two offices in the department, it's a little, I thought I should do that.
We can change that.
Sylvia, I just have one quick, I don't want to upset the apple cart, Bill. The one thing, I was, after reading this last night, or the night before, the only thing I noticed that wasn't on the list of items that, like action items that prompt this plan to take effect, was prolonged power outages. I didn't see that in there. I thought maybe it should be in there, but like I said, I don't want to upset the apple cart here at the last minute.
It might be in one of the projects.
That might, yeah, that might be part of...
Somewhere down around the 70s, page 70 and stuff, if you got that part. There's a list of all different projects. I thought I saw something about generators.
Yeah, the generator for the town hall, generator for the police department.
Groundhog house, too, I think.
Yes.
And I saw something mentioned about trimming trees, or magnets, so we don't, it's in the 70s. It starts at 72 and goes to 75.
Talking about the mitigation strategies.
The projects.
Yeah, you're right. There's 69, page 70, 69, 70. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt the...
Hazardous mitigation plan.
Who that?
Hazardous mitigation plan. Motion to adopt the hazardous mitigation plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more comments or questions?
Which has a small change.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Bill. Thank you.
All right, new business. What we've finally been waiting for, the earth removal registration filed by Marilyn and Roger Kenyon. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, you have some comments to make?
Yes, Madam President, forgive my English. Since this is the first time that the council has the opportunity to address this issue under its new ordinance, I want to take a few minutes just to make sure that you all understand what your role is in this particular issue. I know you all had in-depth involvement in adoption of the ordinance, and you probably know it better than just about anybody else in this room. But if you take yourself through it, what you're here today to do is to register a, in most instances, a pre-existing non-conforming use, and some of them, they have lawful use. And there are certain criteria set out in the ordinance to give you some guidance as to what you're looking for in order to say, yes, we should register this particular gravel bank. The guidance that's provided in the ordinance includes submission criteria that you should be looking for to see, has the applicant provided those submission criteria to your satisfaction? And they're all enumerated in there. They include a Class IV survey, which sets out the existing site plan, existing area and area for future expansion of earth removal, zoning certificate to confirm the existence of a non-conforming legal use or existing legal use, the RIPD's permit or intent to get one. The plan should show the location of certain physical features, should show the floodplain, surface water, groundwater, endangered species, wetlands, historical sites. And there's also a section that talks about what information the applicant is obligated to give you. Those are things like hours of operation, efforts to mitigate things like noise and dust, what they're going to do for spill control, a statement that they're going to comply with existing ordinances, well, we hope so, restoration plan when the gravel bank is finished, any applications for or any permits that the gravel bank currently has or has applied for, and contact information principally for the person who's responsible for the operation. There's a filing fee of $100, and part of the process that preceded this evening's matter was reference to both the planner and the planning board for their comments. That has happened, and both the planner and the planning board recommend that you register this particular gravel bank. So, once you've taken yourself through those steps and decided whether they've satisfied the information criteria and the submission criteria, you should vote on registering the gravel bank, and then the registration will be good for one year. If there are no questions, I leave it in your hands.
Council, any questions? Scott, any more?
No, I, looking at the map, would you comment on, I think, if I remember the map, you have existing gravel operation, and then you have current gravel operation.
Which is in Connecticut.
Yeah, Connecticut.
That doesn't belong to them, I don't think.
No, that's the Lewis one that exists.
You don't own the Connecticut side anymore, right?
That's the Lewis.
Yep.
You can look at the map closer.
So, it's only this strip here, and here's the existing gravel bank right now. And that's, this is all the hill way down here.
The--
Another property left.
I look favorable for this application, and it gets, from what I've seen, is the first application since the adoption of the ordinance, it seems to take care of all the things necessary. And you did, you know, Mr. Kenyon's father, Reggie Kenyon, well-known resident town fellow, town clerk, he was involved in a lot of activities on that property and in the area. And I think people would be challenged to question whether or not there was gravel operation there on that site. And I look favorable toward the applicant unless somebody comes up with something phenomenal to deny it. So, I'm applying to approve.
Tom, do you have anything?
No, I know the property very well. I can attest that there is a gravel bank and usage on there, and it has been excavated well.
Since before you were born, I think.
Probably, but I remember when I was a young kid that Reggie--
He was done by shovel.
Yeah. I think Reggie was using a steam engine at the time, no. But I do know where the gravel bank is, and I know the whole area, and I have no problem with the application.
Yeah, it's a good job, everything seems to be in order. Nice. Barbara?
Yeah, I've been following it since the beginning, and through the planning board as well. I think it was just beautifully put together. It's a perfect application. I hope you have a wonderful time digging up whatever you want. Nice to meet you, Mr. Kenyon.
Yeah, Mr. Kenyon, hi, how you doing? Yeah, I think the application looks very complete, and it's got the blessing of zoning, zoning official, zoning board, town planner, and planning board. I have certainly no expertise beyond those folks, so I certainly would bless the application going forward, so.
And we like your engineer.
We should build more fireplaces.
Don't break that.
Is there anyone from the public that wanted to comment on this agenda item? Hey, it looks like you're free and clear.
Motion to approve the earth removal registration application filed by Marilyn and Roger Kenyon.
Second.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I'd just like to--
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And thank you.
Good job.
And we'd like to thank publicly the zoning official, Mr. Lawrence, helping us with this thing for the first time. Anyone who's five, so, Brad was very helpful.
Good. And you didn't have to say anything, Mr. Nakano.
I know. That's unusual.
Being a lawyer is keeping your mouth.
Good night.
Thanks, Mr. Kenyon.
All right, next up, discussion establishment of subcommittee to reconfigure or revise animal control ordinance requested by Councilor Capable.
Hi, we've talked about this before, and so I wrote up some information about it, because I really feel that a lot of the things that we're doing in the next two years is going to affect how the town is looked at for the next, in the 21st century. The next one to two years is going to be spent reviewing, revising, establishing, and determining for the 21st century, the place and position of any number of rules and regulations for the town of Hopkinton and effectively who the town of Hopkinton is. We are establishing the Charter Revision Commission this year. The planners department is completely revising the regulations, the sub-regulations for all residential commercial developers. We've established a fund to review, revise, and rewrite the zoning regulations on our use table, which is crucial because it has to do with our offer. The comp plan is approved, and the council must create the creation of a new zoning map to coordinate with the new regulations, since zoning effectively will trump the comp plan in the future. This is the time to review and revise different ordinances as well. Some are simple, and we can get those done relatively quickly. But we have had prior conflicts where the animal control ordinance is concerned, and these issues should be conceived as an ally in helping us identify and solve underlying problems. The challenges and changing circumstances encourage us to consider this a rural community and its place as such in a larger state, which prefers that everything is suburban because we're so small, oh, we're all so close. But we're effectively rural, and I'd like to see it stay that way. I want to have a committee created to reconfigure the animal control ordinance so that it is in compliance with state law, and it will become a strong set of regulations to enforce the humane, sanitary manner and proper shelter according to size and species of all animals kept in a rural community, whether residential, RFR80, or farm, forest, and open space. So, that's the reason I'd like to set this up as a committee and reconfigure the animal control ordinance, because some of it follows the state, some of it doesn't, and we need to be a little more precise.
Tom?
Barbara, when I went through this, it's, I agree with you 100%, 100%. But I was thinking, we just appointed someone, well, we haven't yet, we just interviewed somebody for the Animal Control Commission. Instead of starting another committee, why don't we send this to the Animal Control Commission, and the councils can go with them? That's their job, anyway. I mean--
I would like to see the, I would like the committees that we start to have council members on the committee, and then the town manager, certainly members of the commissions, these are volunteers from town, so we have town citizens, and other people of interest in the town on those committees, so we can talk about them in detail, especially, some of them are easy, this one is not, it's far more complex, and it is not--
Oh, I understand that.
You know, it's not, the Animal Control Commission is, you know, mostly dogs and cats. We have to deal with cows, horses, herbivores.
I sat here at that meeting that night, and that woman that's on the commission--
Oh, Holly Green.
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
She was all in favor of--
Absolutely.
These changes and stuff, and she was a great advocate of what you and I had both thought, said. I just think, we already have a commission, let's let them do the job. We can, we can, the meetings are public, we can go, we can put our input in. We can be just as much a part of that committee--
By attending a meeting.
Just by being there.
And that's--
And then we would know what they're thinking. It's still got to come before the council to make that. I just, you know, they're going to get their people, they're going to start, let's give them a job.
If you have that, do they have enough people to do the committee?
We have three.
No, we're adding Nancy.
Well, yeah, she'll be the quorum.
And that's the one that'll change the whole thing.
So, as long as they have a quorum and can function--
And then work with the department head, which is Terry.
Terry. If you want to be the lead, Barbara.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I would like to be there, too.
Right, I think you should be.
I understand that, I mean, I got three more meetings left, but I still, as a citizen, want to be part of that whole scenario.
It's that I think it needs to be--
But I think we should, I mean, I agree with what your letter says, 100%, but I think we have a commission, let's let them do the job.
And they're very experienced.
Yeah. Like I said, you've already got advocates for it by Mrs. Green.
I mean, I wanted Holly Green on committee, anyway. So, that's fine.
And she's on it, by the way. I had Lisa check, and she is, as you remembered--
Yeah, I, there's a lot of things I remember.
And it goes until February? They need to be renewed, oh, okay, so we'll set that up.
Okay, so Holly--
So, meanwhile, they're on it, anyway.
Now, Mike, I have one other question.
Her husband and Holly?
Yes.
Who's her husband?
He's Robert.
Robert Green?
Robert Green.
He's a postmaster.
I know, but I didn't, I don't know who's related to who sometimes.
I know.
So, I don't know who her husband is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It could be Lisa's husband, it could be Green's husband.
Yeah, okay, it's Robert Green.
Robert Green and Holly Green, and then if we put Nancy Meisler.
Meisler, perfect.
But my question is, and Barbara, you can follow me on this, the number that we are looking for, the third person to create the commission to make it active, that's the minimum. What's the maximum?
I think, then we just reduce it?
We were--
No, we need a, we need a minimum so they can be, have a meeting--
No, I know that, but I thought--
They have a quorum.
It is three.
But I mean, what is the maximum? Is it six, is it seven? I think it would be seven, I thought.
There, well, I've got the ordinance right here.
So, you could actually, if somebody else wanted to be part of the--
Oh, good.
They could file for the commission and--
All right, well, let me let you know that at a previous meeting, we had decided that we wanted to take the--
Number down.
Where is it? The number from, here it is. Animal control, we decided to take it down from five to three, and that's an ordinance that's going to be coming before you.
But that was for a minimum.
No.
No.
No, that was a pointed committee consisting of three individuals.
Okay, I would understand that that was a minimum so they could have a quorum.
No.
No, but I think--
Okay, but I mean--
That was what we were thinking, because they always had three, and I don't know why, they never had more, but from my memory, going back, they always had at least three members.
I think, like I said, they have two advocates already on there. And with Nancy, I think, I think we should let them do, take the bull by the horns, and we could be there, and, because those meetings are open to the public.
I think, yeah, I think that's fine. As long as you can get a committee together so you can talk about all the different aspects of it, because it's something that establishes us as a rural community.
I agree.
And I think that's important.
I want to read a letter to you that was sent to the council in June of 2007.
2007?
2007, I say these things. Dear council members, because this is something we didn't do, when we don't do things, I tend to say that, meaning to get to it, but it's been a while. It has come to my attention that certain zoning ordinance, see if anybody remembers this, certain zoning ordinances in the town of Hopkinton are not well-defined. An example which is of concern to me is the lack of definition for livestock farms, number 103. The RES-1 zoning ordinance clearly states that livestock farms are not permitted in RES-1 areas. The problem is that since there is no definition of livestock farms, an individual is permitted to have any number of livestock in an RES-1 zone. I became aware of this as a result of the zoning department's inability to answer my questions definitively due to the lack of clarity in the written zoning ordinances. As a citizen and taxpayer of the town of Hopkinton, I would urge the council to consider a means of addressing the inadequacies in our zoning ordinances. Thank you for your attention regarding this matter. Sincerely, Elizabeth-- I can't read the last name.
Cook Martin?
No.
Is it Olson, or, can you read it?
Owleen.
Owleen, okay. So, we're finally going to get around to it.
I know, we have things to cover, it's true.
Jeez.
Yeah, sure. Okay.
This is just a--
So, all right, so we got a plan.
Is it a consensus?
Yeah, we have, we'll move forward with it.
Okay.
The only bad thing--
Well, actually, well, it doesn't say vote, so, but we don't think--
It's a consensus.
We're going to go forward with this and--
Yeah.
Consensus. All right, so all we have to do is make our appointments, and it's good to go. Okay. All right, next up, public forum, the last public forum. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, sir.
Rick Overn, 12 Hopkinton Hill Road. I'm sure you guys all know me, I've been here a bunch of times. An engineering letter from last January that has six pages of stuff that needs to get done in Hopkinton Hill Road before it gets accepted. Couple of months ago, I was under the impression that the town was still owed money for some of the engineering work that was done on this, all this stuff, the stuff that we're waiting for. You know, four years I've been living there, three years I've been promised that this thing was going to be done. I am totally, I don't want to say flabbergasted, but almost flabbergasted, that we are going back and saying, we're going to get another engineering firm and hope that they pay for it, and have them come in and look at it. It's great that our road was paved last year, that's great. I still, Mr. Teff was there this morning, I still have water that comes into my driveway, I still see water that goes around the drains, I still see water that shoots out like Old Faithful from a pipe. I still see stuff that's been on this list for three years. And I don't, I truly don't understand why we need to go back and get another engineering firm, just get it done. We were promised in May, May, that Cardinal Lane was going to be start being constructed on July 25th, I believe it was. Then by August 30th, the first binder coat was going to be done, and then by October 5th, the road was going to be completed. I don't know if any of you have driven down there, but it's not even remotely close to it, and October 5th is, what, two weeks away? Tired of it. Absolutely tired of it. I'm tired of talking, I'm tired of hearing myself talk, I'm tired of sending emails, I'm tired of talking to Ms. Capable and Mr. Buck all the time. They come by, talk to them all the time, it's great, I appreciate that you guys are coming through. I'm done. This is, this is just laughable. I mean, I tell people about this, I talk to people about it, they're like, why are you getting so fired up about your neighborhood? I tell them about it, and they laugh. They can't believe this stuff continues to go on, day in and day out. And we get another engineering firm, that means, what, our road's not going to be a town road till next year, maybe? We're not going to get plowed out by the town till next year, so I'm going to have the same problems I had last year in the one or two snowstorms that we had, that it was a day or two before we got plowed out, and if we get a lot of snow, we end up with one lane, so people are going up on the sides and everything like that. I'm just tired of it. Absolutely beyond tired of it.
Do you have any comments, Bill?
I do. I'd just like to address a couple of inaccuracies. The other engineering firm is, like I said, is only being hired because the current engineering firm doesn't have the survey personnel to do the work that we're looking for. So, we're not replacing one engineering firm with another, we're just using a different engineering firm for a specific purpose that Fussin O'Neil can't provide for us.
So, then why have we been using Fussin O'Neil for engineering for the last three years, putting out reports that you say, once everything on this report gets done, it's going to be a town road? If now you're telling me they're not qualified, we need to get somebody else in here?
That's not what I said. What I said is they don't do the survey work. We have to go with another engineering firm who does survey work. That's what I said.
Survey work for, so the road can be completed, or?
Yes, that's correct.
I'm going to go sit down, is that okay? I'm going to go sit down, is that okay?
I don't blame you, you don't want to fall down.
Madam President, I just, I just want to say, by, by chance, the other day, I was invited to go to that site, I didn't go to the end of the road, I saw where they're building the new road in that development. And as a council person, any of us on the council, we have a council manager form of government, so we have to work to our manager. So the role of a council member on these types of things is very limited. And I was a little concerned about going, but I did decide to go and I did walk around where they're building a new road, I didn't go to the end with a group of people, decided to go out that way. But I have went up there, I think, for the first time last week and, but I do appreciate the input, but I do think that individual councils have to, you know, our role is probably very limited because we do have a council manager form of government and they deal with the people that we have contracts with, I think of that nature. I just wanted to let you know that I was up there.
And I understand that, I just want you to see the absolute frustration that I have.
Scott, we're not up there to make changes. Star has emailed me, I've seen plenty of his letters, I read the planning board reports, and I can understand this frustration. That's why I went up there. I wanted to see what he was talking about. It was not to change the world or anything like that. I was trying to do my due diligence by investigating some of the complaints that have come in. So, I mean, I kind of take a little bit of offense that you think that the council is doing something on the side to circumvent the policies and procedures that we do. I have been up there a number of times, probably a dozen times I've been through there. I've been there when it's pouring rain, I've seen the water pouring out of the culverts and pipes, I've seen it washed out, I've seen the dirt. I go down there after a rainstorm to inspect where the sand is going across the road so I know if it's going in culverts or if it's going across the road. My biggest concern coming up is, and I don't know, Bill, if there's anything we can do, would be definitely the safety issue of the plowing of the road. Can we get ahold of our solicitor? He's here, so he's going to hear it anyway, but to force Mr. Carr that if there is any kind of snow whatsoever, I don't care if it's quarter of an inch, that he brings a plow up there. He sands those roads for the safety of the residents and taxpayers of this town. I know the town, the road is not ours and I have issues before we accept the road.
You're not going to be accepted.
There are a lot of issues that I had before we accept the road. I won't be a counselor at that time, but I sure as heck will be standing at that microphone letting whoever's sitting up here know what needs to be inspected before the town takes over that road. But I think there's got to be some kind of pressure we can put on him to make sure the safety of the citizens that live in that area is addressed as a priority there.
But in that case-
If I can, President, let me just add a little clarity to the situation. We have to keep in mind that this is a private project being developed by private individuals. The town's role in it is well-defined by the regulations and ordinances that govern these kind of planning board developments. And in particular, we're involved in this situation as the town because it involves public improvements. We've got Hopkinton Hill Road, which is one aspect of the public improvements at issue, and the other aspect is Cardinal Lane. What complicates it further is we have two separate entities dealing with those public improvements and they're happening at different times. They're interrelated, however, and it's created a nightmare, as you can imagine. The bottom line is this, the town has been doing its job in keeping these developers stuck to the regulations and ordinances that they're required to observe and to not let them advance further without following the ordinances. However, that does not mean the developer has been doing everything that they promised.
Either of them.
The comments that were made by Mr. O'Grady and others over time have to be tempered against that, that these promises are not promises by the town. These obligations are not obligations by the town. They are promises and obligations owed by a private party to these individuals. And that's the situation we find ourselves in. Now, I can understand why public members come to you guys to voice the problems that are going on, but they should be going to those people who have the obligation, who make the promise. It's not us.
Can I say something real quick about that?
Please come back up to the microphone.
Sylvia, can I respond?
I try. You're on every email that I send to Sue Atchison about that pipe. I send it to her, I tell her that the pipe is broken, the pipe's not working, water's coming out of it. You see her responses that say it's working fine, nothing's working, everything's like that. Mr. Teff and Mr. Lamphier went there last week or two weeks ago when we had the heavy rain. They said something to Ms. Atchison, she went out, cleaned the pipe out and fixed that. So you can, you can say I'm not trying to talk to them, I am trying to talk to them, they don't listen to me.
They also don't listen to us.
They don't listen to anybody.
I have been at the planning board, I've been at the planning board meetings as well as listening to these citizens and the two developers do not listen to the planning board, they would not listen to the council, certainly, and/or our engineers and/or Public Works. This is ridiculous. These two developers are tremendous liabilities to the town.
I think that if either one of these developers decide to do anything, it's in town, I mean, we can't deny them.
Be careful here. I want to be careful, I don't want to get sued.
Well, all I want to do is, is there a bond or something we can attach to make sure, no, I want these individuals-
You want to know if there's anything else we can do?
Yes, for the plowing of the road, and I want it plowed, I want it, and I will be up there this winter. I go to the whole valley two or three times a week and there's all the time that I'm always talking.
I can hear your truck come through every day.
I'll change the muffler. But no, I mean, those roads need to be plowed. I know it's not our responsibility, but I just want to make sure it is done, because if they fail to do anything else that we require them to do.
Sylvia, you referred to my office, Councilman, then I'll address that question.
Thank you.
Sylvia, in response to Tom, when I accidentally, I ran into, while I went up to see him, Lamphier, and I was invited to go to that site, I had a little reservation about going, but I decided to go. And it wasn't an umbrage against the counselor, any of the members of the council, because I did go that day after I went, I did tell the town manager, went to city manager and told him I went. I was a little concerned about going, but I did go after and tell the town manager I did go to and examined the site and, but I just want to state that back, it wasn't a slide against the council, because I think people do come to council members about certain things and our role is limited. And sometimes we don't fully know what we can do and what we can't do, either.
Point well taken, Scott.
Okay. I think we're all set. Is there anyone else, I'm sorry, anyone else, come on up.
Claudia Peduzzi, 50, Hopkinton Hill Road. I'm in the back and I do appreciate, we've seen people come in several times. As far as when I bought my house, I didn't know Bob Carr existed. I bought it from Amalfi Homes. I was told it was already a town road. I've gone to several planning board meetings, the engineer from Fussin' O'Neill, he was, he stood here incredulous, what he said, the water wasn't going where it was supposed to go. I don't have much confidence in them. You drive in, they've got two big pipes. Then obviously that didn't work, they somehow decide to change, and this was after several revisions. Now we have the one big pipe. It's still, it's like a geyser when there's a lot of rain. I'm also concerned, as Mr. O'Grady, I'm way in the back, if we have a bad winter again, I'm not going to be able to get out. Before they paved the road, I used to get gravel and sand collecting in front of my driveway. Well, it's taken a while, the sand and the gravel started to come back. The drainage there is inadequate. However, they decide to engineer it, and what they've done obviously has not worked. They have cleared, and I don't know if it's Amalfi Homes, Bob Carr, they've cleared the house next to, they've cleared a lot, months ago. There were all kinds of stumps, they haven't come back, there was a big piece of equipment there for a while, now it's gone. Whether or not they're planning on layer foundation, who knows? This is what we deal with. There's one tree that at some point will come down. Now I'm noticing, and it's in between me and the stop sign, I'm noticing when we get a lot of wind now, pieces are starting to fall on the road. There's definitely safety issues there. A lot of us walk, a lot of people have pets, one of these days, somebody is going to get hurt. We've been lucky so far and I question that, originally it was that big dirt wall, now they've got the rocks there again, that might give way at some point, too. It's not safe. We pay our taxes, we're trying to be good citizens, we brought this to your attention, the planning board attention, we're just frustrated. I know you see the same faces all the time, but the other people say, the other residents, why bother?
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes.
I'm Todd Spazato, 1229 North Road, as you know. You've had that letter since 2007 and we went through all that pain about the grayness and we went the extra mile to have the DEM drive all the way down to this town meeting to help you clarify what the laws were and you still let us go through all that pain for seven months. Thank you, Sylvia, thank you.
How could the letter affect anything?
You know what you've had from since 2007. Nice job, thanks.
Okay, fine. Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight? No, it's okay, you can if you want to, really. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a, I'd like to motion that we adjourn in memory of Bonnie Martin and Mary Coppershaw from Coppershaw Beach, she passed away today.
Bonnie Martin, for those who don't know, was the meal site manager at the Crandall House in the late 80s and the 90s and she was, before she became a town employee and did it, she worked through something in West, the state, the state, it was a state, one of those state-funded things and then when the funding dried up, the town decided to fund it, so she became a town employee. But before she did it, her mother used to do it and her mother's name was Ann Care. So her mother retired from it and Bonnie took it over and she passed away a couple of weeks ago. A very, a good friend to many people in Hopkinton, lives up on, with her husband, her husband still lives up on Max and Hill Road.
And Mary was 94, she owned half of South County, still does, and Coppershaw Beach was named after her and her family, but, yeah, so she, she passed away today, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.